All right, we'll call this meeting of the Evendale Village Council to order and we'll begin with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin tonight with two public hearings.
Roll call.
We'll begin with the roll call.
Do that after public hearings.
Public hearings first.
Okay, I was right.
With the first public hearing is the 2024 Village of Evendale capital items, which council has determined. They have been passed out to you and is there anyone who wants to discuss the capital items? If not, that will conclude the public hearing on the capital items. The next is the text amendment to the zoning code definitions in chapter 1242 related to residential zoning. Is there anyone here who would like to talk about the, this particular ordinance? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
I, again, I'm Noel.
Hold on, Mike, the mic's not on either.
That's better.
Is it on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, my name is Noel Mounds, again, I'm at 3790 Moor Hill Drive. Council Mayor, I'd like to, when you consider the revisions of the residential, Evendale's residential zoning codes, I'd like to share a few more thoughts. So I became involved because of the concerns I had with a residential home that a property owner decided to rent out. So I reached out to you, I reached out to my elected officials, I reached out to Dave and Mark. I attended, started attending Planning Commission meetings to bring about the awareness on how property owners were renting out their properties and the concerns I had with zoning codes, which has led to where we are now with the revisions that I feel that are needed for the codes. So I feel the revisions are needed, as you consider it, to protect Evendale's vision of the single dwelling residential that we are known to have and maintains integrity. Revisions are needed to keep up with property owners who use residential homes in Evendale for profit. And revisions are needed to keep up with the commercialization. Zoning codes, when you put them in place, they need to be enforced and we need to be consistent. So enforcement, it brings about awareness of what is allowed and is not allowed. It also educates us, it educates residents also of what is allowed and not allowed. It keeps us safe and maintains boundaries, and I can go on. I also feel that the zoning codes should be reviewed yearly to make sure we're keeping up with changes, commercialization, or anything that may, situations that we may not have thought of, because I feel like where we are now, what's before you took a long time because things weren't looked at yearly, may have avoided a lot of things. So I want to thank any elected officials that took the time to listen to me and talk to me, Dave and Mark, Planning Commission, my neighbors who are not here who supported me, there are snowbirds. And those of you who took the time to educate me about local government and how state laws apply, and council, I forgot you, you as well. So with that said, you know, the revisions are needed to maintain our single-family residential zoning. It protects Evendale from situations in which some of our neighboring municipalities are dealing with now. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, I think we share your concern of the principles of the Village of Evendale and we also want to retain it as a primary residential community. We've tried hard, and I know the committee has tried very hard, Planning Commission, to bring the rules up to date. And I think we've done the best we can under the circumstances of the situation. You're right, we should review them more often than in the past. It seems we tend to review them when we have a problem. And that's probably not correct. Anyone else, anything to say?
Well, just one second, Mayor, I want to thank Noel, she's been terrific. We've had this in front of Planning Commission now for three months and she has diligently shown up at every meeting, had long conversations way into the night about really arcane stuff and definitions and how this really works in real life. And we are grateful that she's taken the time to come down and help be a part of this process, so thank you very much.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, this will conclude the public hearing on the zoning. And we will then move to the council's agenda and first we will have the calling of the roll.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel, here, Mr. Putoff.
Here.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Yeah, here.
Okay, and then we're to consent legislation and we will begin with the minutes, they've previously been distributed. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes. Then we'll move to committee reports and the first committee report is the Finance Committee and Councilperson Burke.
Thank you very much, Finance update, 2024, or 2023 was a record-breaking year, the village ended up with strong, year strongly with receipts over expenditures by $4,397,880, not including TIF funds. This puts us in a great position to fund a numerous capital request that we have been holding off since COVID and also supports the new service building which we desperately need. Tax receipts for the year totaled $17,838,366, which is $1,590,138 over tax receipts in 2022.
The highest we've ever gotten in tax receipts.
Welcome, surprise and testament to the recovery of the businesses in Evendale and investments continued to create an over $1 million investment return too, so. We don't like the other side of interest rates, but this helps us in this case. Let's see, GHF, Gorman Farm, Heritage Farm. Updated council on employee changes, growing flower production on cutting subscriptions. Also GHF is still looking for a turkey processor, so if anybody knows of a turkey processor, the current one is, is not going to allow us to return and the current, the nearest one I think was down in Tennessee, so we're still looking. New garden programs led by Jason Camp coming up, summer day camp registrations are eye-opening in February of this year. And new events, May 18th, farm babies, so we'll have lots of babies on the farm and come out and see that. New software, Double Knot for operations, donors and communication is now in place. And then now recreation, a new piece of equipment delivered to the rec center and is being installed. Gingerbread was a success, full three-day event. And then 200 people have visited Santa on that event for all the kids. And Snow Much Fun is January 18th and I think last Friday was the last day to get it at a, the regular price and the price went up for this week. Attendance is back to pre-COVID numbers throughout the rec center, so thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Oh wait, hold on, I got service to.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Jeff's reported on activities in his department, equipment is being repaired for the spring. Christmas trees and honey locusts will be removed in front of the rec center. Rexford residents will be paying for a new mailbox because their old, their old one was rusted out and not in compliance. Griffin Property Tour concentrated, concentration, concentrate of the middle loop and north end of the property for invasion species. And some trees that need to be removed will be taken care of. Christmas Eve shooting and some houses out of the 2014 hour, or 214 hour flock cameras were used to identify the rear license plate and I think we heard today that they were apprehended and so it's definitely helped out, catch a couple more criminals, so. There will be a total of 22 cameras in, within our village, once the last five get installed. Estimates for a service building came in a way, in way over budget and we're looking at other alternatives to get our costs down. Okay, and then are you going to mention about Jeff for the Mill Creek Valley?
Yeah, Jeff Albrink, who was on council, was term limited out, is going to go on the Mill Creek Valley Conservation Authority. I think as of Wednesday and that'll make them a full house, they got a lot of problems that they have to work out. Mainly money and so I think Jeff will be a real, real addition to their, to their group, very much so, very much so. Okay, any other comments, questions? Ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to start with fire. The new hires that we had interviewed and selected last year and have sworn in all started last week, including the new fire marshal. So, and as a reminder to council that Captain Murray, after serving for the village for over 20 years, is retiring. His reception is tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 in the firehouse training room. And we will be doing a proclamation for him, not today, but at January's, excuse me, February's council meeting. Moving on to police, Councilman Burke referenced the shooting and, which occurred on Christmas. I wanted to extend council's thanks and for everyone to know that though it occurred in the early hours of Christmas morning, like 2:00 AM, eight to nine of our officers came in to help assist with the incident and the investigation, which just shows the kind of police department that we have, which we know, but every incident we, you know, see what a fine department we have, so we thank the police department for their efforts there. And also, the Cincinnati Police Museum is featuring the Evendale Police Department this month. And I'm sorry, I meant to say this with, with fire, with Murray's retirement. I just want to remind council and the village that a couple of years ago, we were entering a period where we were going to turn over a lot of the leadership and, and experienced personnel in both the fire and the police departments. And at this point, we've gotten to the point, we got through it and we're in good shape. And we'd like to thank all of the members of both departments for their efforts and their diligence and the way they do their jobs and the way they plan and back up each other such that, we had great candidates to choose from, so I don't think we're any worse off than we were. We may be less comfortable from an experienced position, but we've done well and we got through it, so. Here we go, it's good to be on this side of it too, versus looking at it coming all in one wave.
I might add, the addition of the fire marshal, Jeff talked to the chief before the, before the meeting, it's already paying dividends.
All right, we knew we would have work for.
Yep.
Building, planning, and zoning, the rental registration tax amendment ordinance that we already had the public hearing on, the ordinance is on the agenda, but just want to remind council and. The ordinance is on the agenda, but just want to remind council and, and share to the public, this was going to be the first reading only. Because it is a zoning change, we give opportunity for additional input before we pass an ordinance.
We're going to hold a first, a first hearing tonight on that ordinance. So it will not be passed out tonight. It will go over to February. We want to give people a little more chance to respond to it.
From a, there were no planning commission or BZA cases in December. The January planning commission meeting, though, should be discussing the ordinance covering food, food trucks. And also, Mr. O' point it out to us that a company, which I believe is named Rooted Creative, purchased the old Kinetic Vision building and are coming to planning commission to discuss the plans, their plans for use of the facility. They want to use it as an event space, which is not permitted per our zoning.
Also doesn't meet fire code for that building.
I'll let you both know, we met with the CEO and the chief operating officer Rooted on Friday. They're great people. They've got a number of terrific businesses. They're aware of the, they're aware of the conflict with our code. And they're going to pursue other uses for the building. And we haven't worked out all the details about how to clear the agendas and things like that. But we're in good shape.
Appreciate that. Okay. As far as code enforcement, a summary from, well, excuse me, before I move on to that, let me go to building. There were 20 permitted applications received in December. 18 were issued, amounts to a construction cost of $18,500,000. Code enforcement in 2023, there were 84 violations cited. 62 or 63 of those have been resolved. Three cases were cited to mayor's court. And as we've discussed, I mentioned it last month, and we'll continue to report on the Spartan Drive cleanup. Both Mark and Dave Elmer met with the property manager, who is really working to make sure that that property is upgraded to our standards. Thus far, they've taken care of overgrown grass and removed abandoned vehicles. And there's improvements going on to the interior of the buildings. And also, the property manager is making sure as he talks to potential tenants that remind them that they have to get a zoning certificate before they can move in and conduct business, which is a definite change from times past. And then as far as cultural arts is concerned, all of the December events were very well attended. January classes and wine tasting have resumed. Art ventures this month is touring the Packard facility. And then as far as the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion, the window project is almost finished. The blinds have been rehung. And did we get the last window in yet, I'm going to ask? Have we received it? Not yet. Okay. Still got one window to go. And that's our report.
I want to go to the Packard Museum. My father worked for Citizens Motor Car Company in Cincinnati in 1929 and 1930. And they were the dealership that handled Packards in those days. Packard was the car. I mean, not Cadillac or anything. It was, the car was the Packard. And he used to tell me stories about Packards and what they could do and so forth.
I think they have the Al Capone car at that museum, don't they?
They do. They, they've got a lot of them up there in, in date. It's quite a facility. Quite a facility. Any comments, questions? Okay. I have nothing other than what I've said already. You had one other thing about Joe. Commenting about Joe. Joe Wathan? Yeah, a former councilman, Village of Evendale. Joe Wathan passed away in December. He was 97 years old. He'd been on council for 12 years. He was also chairman of the Planning Commission for 12 years. And he and his wife, Pat, just gave a lot to our community over the years. And they were one of the original founders of what we used to call the Couples Club in Evendale. Knew Joe very well. He just passed away in December. So we're having some stuff for him and. There's a reception, January 13th. January 13th at the rec center. Flex from the rec center. So you're welcome. All right, let's go to then ordinances we have tonight. First ordinance is 24-01, and I'd like a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ordinance making appropriation for transfers, current expenses, and capital expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2004, and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-01 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 24-02, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ordinance approving, transferring general funds to various other funds and declaring it as an emergency. I need to, a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to amend, to suspend the emergency, to suspend, adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare the ordinance adopted 24-02 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 24-03, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance amending various sections of the Evendale Code of ordinances regarding single-family dwellings and residential rental property and declaring it as an emergency. This will constitute the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any other business to come before council tonight? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Adjourned.